This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
The Southampton Select Board at 6:00 PM. We could all stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have our meeting tonight to go over the warrant for the special town meeting. Joy may be joining us remotely. We'll keep an eye out for her if she does. And if she does, we will have any votes taken by roll call. If she doesn't join us, we will be on our normal aye-nay scenario, I believe. So first of all, do we have any open time for the public? Anybody here for open time? Okay.
No, any other business.
Okay, all right. Hearing done, let's move into our business for the evening, which is to go through the special town meeting warrant. As everybody knows, the meeting has been set for December 5th, Tuesday at 7:00 PM at Norris School, as usual. And we have a total, I believe, of 20 articles. And Ed, how would you like us to proceed? Just go through a little bit? Just say number one and what it's all about briefly and...
Sure.
Okay.
Whatever the Select Board would like to do.
All right, well, I'll start and we'll just kind of go through these. So Article 1 is relative to unpaid bills. There are apparently six bills totaling $11,918.78 that had either come in late or had not been paid for FY '23. And so there's transfers to be taken from the current year budget to pay those bills, the way I understand that. Please correct me if I'm wrong. Would anybody want to...
Looks good to me.
Have any questions about them?
The math adds up.
The math adds up? That's a good start. All right. What we'll end up doing is we'll kind of go through these and we'll take a motion at the end rather than doing a motion on each article. Okay, I think we'll go a little bit faster. Article 2 is to transfer transfers for police department operating expenses. And this will be a total of $119,766.50 from the communications wage account to the police and fire operating budgets as listed here. So there's a listing of six items where monies will be coming from the police department to other areas within the police and fire department operating budget.
I think the important thing is to say it's a transfer. It's not...
It's an internal transfer within the department's budget, yes, exactly. Yeah, it's not coming from outside of the... Of that. Any questions? Anybody?
Nope.
Article 3, transfer appropriate for fire EMS operating expenses. This is to vote and transfer a total of $20,000. Some of this, so $9,000 will be appropriated from ambulance receipts and transferring $2,000 from the EMT standby and $9,000 from fire department wages to the fire truck maintenance account for FY '24 operating accounts. And I believe we started talking about this a little bit last meeting. It was maintenance on the ambulance, but mostly maintenance on the two fire trucks. I believe it was for purchase of tires and maybe the 1911 inspection, at least.
For us, $1,500 for the 1911 inspection to two fire apparatus and $8,000 to put two full sets of tires on two of the fire trucks.
Wouldn't it be nice to add that detail here? Do you think townspeople would want to know that during the meeting? It's in the...
It will come with... This is a warrant for posting. This is just the article. The one that is actually presented and used at the special town meeting or an annual town meeting actually has a summary with it and the motion with it.
That's great.
Yeah, so this is what just has to get posted by the constable to allow us to have the actual special town meeting.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Article number 4, transfer for assessors department operating expenses. To transfer, again, this is within department, to transfer $36,000 within the assessor's operating budget from the assessor or consultant's line to the principal assessor's salary account in order to cover the temporary principal assessor's salary. Okay, pretty straightforward, I think. Article 5, transfer for the highway department operating expenses.
So on this particular one, the math does not add up.
Okay. Yes, it does not. So transfer the math on this one. Is it the $17,000 that's desired? The figures below don't add up.
Yeah. You're right.
So this would be to transfer funds from the general highway wage line to the department operating budget line, highway department. One is for the culvert assessment to be done, additional funds needed for that, and one is a wage correction for the admin assistant highway. But are sub amounts around?
And we'll have to change that 17,727.86 to 21,227.86.
And this was, I think, as we talked about last time, it was just to break out wages. Was that part of it? It wasn't to... Right now, all the wages are lumped in one line, is that...
There's three line items that pertain to wages within the highway department. One's the superintendent of highway, one's the admin. Everybody else falls under that third line item. So if, before you can have a conversation about adjusting someone's comp, you have to identify the funding source. So this is his way of trying to identify. And then if he identifies it, it doesn't automatically happen, but it allows the conversation to then take place at PPP and then on to Select Board.
Got it. Okay. Anybody have any other questions? Okay, Article 6, transfer for the treasurer/intergovernmental department operating expenses. This is to transfer $6,000 from group health insurance to the unemployment operating budget line in the treasurer's intergovernmental department operating budget for 2024.
I'm not opposed to this. I just remember last year when we were talking about the budget, there were credits being worked out in that account, which I think is one of the reasons why we fund it where it is. So I'm just assuming, although it's not said here, that we've used up all those credits.
That is correct.
Yeah.
Okay. And so the $6,000 would carry us through the whole fiscal year, is that the intent?
Correct. Currently, we do have one person that is collecting unemployment.
Okay. Okay. Article 7, transfer for health department for operating expenses. This is a total of $19,195, of which $6,195 would come from the health agent wage account and $13,000 from the group health insurance to cover the BOH contracted expenses budget, which is basically the contracted health agent.
Correct.
And this, I believe, we had put some funds aside in the health... I think Kate had talked about it last meeting. We had some funds aside in the health agent wage line in case they found somebody. And given the way it's been going for months and months now, it doesn't look very promising that they're going to find anybody anytime soon. So in order to have funds to be able to do this, Ed and I talked about zeroing out that line, and that's where the $6,195 comes from, in order to have funds to cover the contractor.
It'll leave 94 cents in that line.
94 cents, okay. Okay. Number 8 should be the transfer from free cash to operational stabilization to replenish it for use for Hampshire Regional Assessment. This was to transfer and appropriate $350,000... Sorry, $350,387 to the operational stabilization fund account to replenish what was used in the FY '24 budget process for the Hampshire Regional School Assessment account. Maybe, Dan, if we need any further reminder about that. Some of us were not part of that discussion. If you have any questions? No one?
I'm good.
If it made sense at the time.
It made sense at the time, yeah. Okay. Okay, number 9, transfer from free cash to the capital stabilization fund. This would be an amount of $96,564 from capital stabilization... Sorry, from free cash to capital stabilization.
Are the... Do these... These dollars amounts represent the percentage that's traditionally done? Or are they just placeholders or...
They are placeholders. They are... Represent percentages of the fictitional amount that I have estimated at this particular time.
Okay.
Okay.
Is that to say that free cash has not yet been certified?
It is not yet certified. This would be a placeholder for, hopefully, and it will be certified by the time we have the special town meeting.
Thank you.
And if, for example, it were not, we would just pass over these articles?
Correct.
Right. If we need to tweak the number, we just amend it on the floor?
Yeah. Okay. So following on that line of logic, Article 10, transfer from free cash to the operating stabilization fund, the amount of $82,769. And then Article 11, transfer from free cash to the OPEB fund, which is for $27,590 to the other post-employment benefits account. Okay, so those are all placeholders at this point in time?
Why doesn't this one specifically say town and administration?
It's because I cut and pasted, and I did not remove that from the cut and paste. So it's another one I have to adjust for the two copies of the signing warrant.
Ed is always open to somebody else stepping up and speaking to, if you want to volunteer.
That's right.
All that information will be put in on the full version, where we have the summary and the motion for that night, so this is...
And I believe it actually usually defaults to the individual that found what I erased.
Uh-oh. Anyway, okay. Moving on. Article 12, vote to establish an opioid stabilization account. And this, I think, I won't read all this language here, but basically there are mass general laws that allow the creation of a special purpose stabilization fund for many towns that are getting... That have signed on to opioid settlement accounts. And we're getting in funds for that, for those settlements, that this would reserve those in a special account to be used per whatever the directions are to how they had to be used, right?
Correct. At, to this point in time, DOR, Department of Revenue and Division of Local Services has not come up with a other option than this. They are working on it, but at this point in time, there is not another option that would work correctly.
Right. So basically, 100% of any opioid litigation funds that we would get would go into this special account to be kind of untouchable for...
And then we would appropriate out of that.
Right, yeah. Okay. Anybody have any questions about that?
No, and just, I mean, towards the end, the language is there too. So once it passes and it's created, the treasurer can just move the money in there that's already on the books. We don't need another vote to do that.
Correct, yeah. We have about, I think, $34,000, $35,000 perhaps already received and more to come. So this would allow, you're correct, the treasurer to be able to move that once the account were established.
Question about the funds, use of the funds. These will accumulate to be used only for the allowable purposes under state law.
I would believe so.
Yeah.
And have those guidelines been established yet?
I don't know. Some of the opioid substance abuse account information, I'm not sure if the total set of the guidelines have been given to us. I don't know. I know the...
There are some guidelines.
There's some, but I... Okay, I don't know if we've got a full listing of them, but it was kind of tied in. We had, you know, with our cannabis thing as well. We were trying to figure out how to use any of these things toward, basically towards substance abuse education and those kinds of prevention kind of things.
Right, but within the allowable uses under state law, there are funds that could be used right away?
Yes.
Once we establish this, yeah, I believe so, yeah.
Yep.
We'd have to pull out whatever the guidance has come in. I haven't looked at that lately. Okay, Article 13, funding for Norris Elementary School 7D student transportation van. This is to appropriate $98,000 to purchase a new school 7D student transportation van for Norris Elementary to replace the existing van. And I guess I don't know what a 7D van is.
It's a yellow pupil plate. It's a, you know, when you get behind those minivans, the school buses, they have a yellow plate. Says masked pupil, that's a designation of 7D. You need a medical cert. You need a lot of the same certifications you need to drive the FERT bus out here in order to operate that vehicle.
I didn't know what 7D meant, thank you.
My guess is it's the section of the law that pretends to school buses.
Yeah, okay.
Ian's looking it up.
I had a question around it too. I must have missed a conversation. So did we get a quote in for 98, okay?
Well, 78 was the number in my head, so that's my question to Ed on where did the 98 came from.
Rather than 78?
So I assume there's an update.
It came from the same place. I actually got, borrowed these specifications to bid this. And what they received back for bids, I will tell you that this was a little bigger van. I think it's a 910 instead of a 78. But I felt comfortable...
That should cover the inclusive cost.
It should cover it, you know. We actually, you know, when the time comes, what gets borrowed won't be any more than what the actual acquisition cost is. And, you know, while the school is not actually looking for funding from capital to do this, they have their own, shall we say, funding source to repay the debt. I just want to, for those that are new, remind everyone that by our bylaws, anytime we borrow money, it actually requires a vote from the capital committee. And bond council will look for that vote when the time comes to actually borrow the money. So that was the initial drive of... Once I found out that the van was needed fairly quickly to get this added to the special town meeting warrant. And the capital committee is actually working to set up a meeting with the school department so they can hear about it and actually take action for the needed vote.
So do I understand this is a 910 passenger van? Is that what the 910 was referring to, or no?
What's that?
When you said...
910 is the bigger van that holds 9 to 10. Our traditional one is the 6 to 7. It's the preschool size versus high school.
So 9 to 10 students would be the passenger load, possibly?
Yeah, probably nine students, one...
Driver.
One additional for the driver. I believe what the school was looking for was a 78.
Yeah.
If my memory's correct.
So it might be closer to the 78, which is one, yeah.
And we may have to, I think I brought this up last meeting, they may have to be looking at the possibility of a hybrid as well, given the new regulations on purchasing vehicles as part of our fleet.
Yeah. I don't know the, and it might just be word semantics, but is this, in this article, should it... Where it says to see if the town will for Southampton, but isn't it really the school board, school committee? School committee ultimately is going to vote to initiate the debt.
Is the school part of the town of Southampton?
They're elected independently, so it wouldn't fall to the Select Board for the vote. That's the only reason why I bring it up. Is bond council going to look for a formal vote from the school?
Well, actually, the trick here is not what the article says and what's the motion says, which I haven't drafted as of yet. And that's, the motion will be what the bond council actually...
Will write up, yeah, okay.
And that's, yeah, and actually for that, I will actually reach out to bond council and say, "Here's what we're trying to do. Would you please draft the language that you would accept?"
Yeah.
Now, I do note that Joy is there, so Joy, if you have any questions or comments, just let us know at any point in time, okay?
Not at this moment, but thanks.
Okay, thanks.
Welcome, Joy.
Yeah, glad you could join in. All right, number, Article number 14, funding supplemental for the highway department 1-ton truck. This is to appropriate an additional amount of $17,339.70 for a Ford F-350 1-ton truck with plow and drop-in sander for the highway department that apparently was originally approved for funding in June 21 of the annual town meeting.
Yeah, and so this is like the utility trailer for the fire department that just never really gets purchased. I mean, this is the third appropriation for it, so let's get this ordered.
This one had a particular issue with...
Can't order unless you got enough money, yes. This was originally approved at the June 2021 annual town meeting. Ford actually canceled the order on us.
Ford canceled it.
Yeah, but it was a debt override. It's the vote. The vote was a debt override, override exclusion.
In '21?
Yeah. It was outside, it was outside the two and a half limit. It was a special 1-ton, you know. The debt's coming on the books just for this, and then it goes away when this is done.
Original, original appropriation was $44,000. You're thinking of one of the bigger trucks.
Okay, so we'll figure that out. But so this is an additional... So the order was going to be made, Ford canceled the order, and...
And during COVID, and so this is the, shall we say, the inflationary factor on that truck.
So now it's available, but it just costs that much more?
Correct.
Seeing as a very specific amount of money, it sounds like it'd be further down the purchasing line than where before of asking for a general amount.
Yeah.
Beg your pardon?
It's a specific amount.
It goes off the 70 cents, so I mean, you guys must be really good that this is an adequate number. Meaning, and that's Dan's points, further along the production line.
Yeah, the current quote on this is the 44,000 plus the 17,339.70. So yes, as soon as, hopefully, this is approved on December 5th, the certified procurement officer will be signing that order.
And the quote is valid until at least midnight on December 6th?
Yes, that is correct, sir.
There we go.
And this is one that's already gone to the capital committee, and this is from the capital stabilization fund?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, they did vote the additional funding for it.
Okay. Article 15 also has gone to the capital committee. This is funding for Norris Elementary School for replacement of ceiling tiles. And this is an amount of $6,500 to replace the water-damaged ceiling tiles in Norris. And that's, again, coming from capital stabilization.
That is correct.
Okay. Any comment there? No? Okay.
It's been only a couple minutes. We fixed the leaks or caused...
Leaks have already been, the roof has been done. Yeah, the roof has been done, I believe. So this is now, yeah, I think the roof has been done. So now it's to cover the, cover the core ceiling tires and what they look like here, so. Article 16, before we do this, I'm going to just put out for myself a notice of disclosure, disclosure of appearance of a conflict of interest. I do not have a conflict of interest, but I have contacted the Ethics Commission. And just because they could be perceived as a potential appearance of a conflict, I have filed the right paperwork with Lucy, our town clerk. And just to note that in this article that I'll read shortly, one of the parcels in question actually belongs to the estate of my deceased brother. So I am not personally benefiting, but my sister-in-law and nephew and nieces will benefit from it. So I'm just disclosing that for appearance sake. It does not prevent me from voting one way or another, according to the Ethics Commission.
Very good, thank you.
Okay, so Article 16, CPC funding for fee acquisition. This is under the Landscape Partnership Grant, Mountain Waters Project, which we've heard about lots and lots and lots, right? So the total amount of money is $97,588. And this will be to acquire two separate parcels, one for 19 acres on Woolcot Road and one for 158 acres on Foma Road. And the tax maps and so forth are listed here. And these would be fully laid out. I guess it's both Select Board and Conservation Commission can accept funds and use these funds and do whatever they need to do according to mass general law here. Without reading, this is pretty lengthy. But just to note, so out of the, out of these two parcels, the 19 acres is the one in question that belongs to my former brother. Okay, my deceased brother, still my brother?
Still your brother.
Okay. Any questions? Anybody?
So again, this program is broken into at least two different articles.
Correct, yeah. So this would be the one...
The one you just introduced is for the outright acquisition of two tracks. And the next article is for the acquisition of a conservation restriction over several more tracks.
Right, correct, yep. So this one is just to have the funds available. So out of, I think we've been hearing a total of $420,000 or something over time. So $97,000 basically goes to buy out these two parcels. And then Article 17, following on, as Stephen just said, this is CPC funding also for conservation restrictions for the Landscape Partnership Grant. And this is, the amount of money there would be a total of $323,100 for conservation restrictions on 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 parcels, I believe, of different acreages. Some are located on Foma Road, some on Cold Spring, some on Maple Street, and some on Glendale Road. Okay? And again, all the details will be posted and ready for people to take a look at. The tax map references are there if anybody would like to look them up. So those two articles together total at $420,000, thereabouts, that we've been told about over time. Okay? Any questions? Anybody?
I had great discussions over the past months, so I feel comfortable understanding this, so...
Okay.
No comment from me.
All right, next, we have two general bylaws. These are new general bylaws. Article 18 is a new bylaw proposed that we have already looked at here at Select Board, and it's already been reviewed and vetted by General Counsel. This is membership on boards, committees, commissions, and councils. And that lays out just some basics of how one constitutes our various committees in town, how the, how people get on a committee. And Dan, I know one of the things you would ask us to do was in Section 3, which was to just put the town website itself without going to the actual page, where you would sign up to be a volunteer on a committee. So we've just got the townofsouthampton.org listing in there, so that was one change. And then Legal Counsel made a couple of other small changes on that. And so this was basically related to how you establish a group and the number of members it should have, et cetera, et cetera. Okay? Anybody have any questions on that? Okay. Article 19, following up on that, is a new general bylaw as well. And this is the same, elected and appointed committees, boards, commissions, councils, ad hoc committees, and this is operating procedures. So this is pertaining to everybody that's been established as a committee or board or commission in town and how they ought to carry out their business. We, the bylaw committee, I'll speak for Francine on this, as she's the chair of the committee. The bylaw review committee, advisory committee, felt that there's been so much turnover in time of people on boards and commissions and committees that we ought to have something in writing in terms of how things need to be done. So that's what this is laid out here in terms of electing officers and, you know, managing their schedule, abiding by the open meeting law, et cetera, posting their meetings on mytown.gov, posting minutes, and following state Ethics Commission laws, what a quorum is. So, and just to note, because we've had various discussions in that over time, first of all, people that are on there cannot be voting at a meeting unless they have been sworn in by the town clerk. So once they're appointed, they have to be sworn in by the town clerk, as well as those that are elected, prior to being eligible to vote in a meeting. And a quorum for conducting business is a simple majority of the members of the group as constituted in the charge, unless another percentage is required by law. But in no case can a quorum be less than two. Okay, obviously, all right. It talks about notifying the chair if you intend to be absent, and that's just common courtesy. If people need a leave of absence for some reason, there's been a time limit in there, et cetera. So this just kind of lays out seven or eight things to keep in mind as people are meeting in their new boards and...
Are we too far along in the process to amend these, number 19 specifically?
Maybe not too big an amendment. Legal counsel's already seen it, but...
All right, so my thought is on 19, Section 3, somehow add a sentence in there, and it's more, it's the last full sentence of that paragraph on page 11. Each member shall provide documentation to town clerk as proof that they successfully completed the online state ethics training program within 30 days of being elected or appointed, period. Town clerk shall notify the appropriate chair of any violations. I mean, there should be, like, you know, the chair can assume that everyone's doing it 30 days, but they don't necessarily have to follow up. If the record keeper is the town clerk, then the town clerk needs to... They know when they sworn in. They know when the clock starts. They know whether they got the report back or not. Otherwise, where's the check and balance? Where's the teeth in that rule? I'm open to other suggestions, but I'm just saying, it seems to go nowhere.
I wouldn't be opposed to that idea. I don't know. Is there any...
I thought that's what I had done when I was sworn in. Took the course and gave the certification.
Correct, and most of us do, but it's when you don't do that, how does that individual committee that you're working on, how's that information get back that you... you never took that course?
To the committee. Thank you.
So this is just closing that feedback loop through the town clerk?
Yep. Oh, that I support. This is all good governance.
Yeah. Ed, would you see any reason not to add that last answer?
No, I do not.
Okay. So let's just have a little bit of wording on that again, John. The town clerk will notify-
The appropriate chair of any violations or failure to comply in a timely manner?
Okay. So that would mean that the chair would assume that everybody's done it unless they hear otherwise.
Unless they're notified differently, right. And then the chair would take appropriate action. They would, they would contact, "Hey, maybe it slipped your mind, but we're required to do this." You know, "Can you get it done within the next week?"
So town clerk will notify the appropriate chair of any violations in a timely manner?
In a manner, is what I have.
Okay, anybody, would you like to take a vote on that? Do we need to add that vote?
I mean, you can just add it at the end.
And approve all whom as amended?
Motion to approve the articles as amended.
Okay, yeah.
Unanimously claimed.
Okay, all right, very good. All right, so that takes care of that one. And then, where are we at here? Okay, last one, I guess.
Thought you said there was 40-something.
Number 20, Massachusetts general law rescind, Mass. General Law 48, Section 42, and Accept 48, Mass. General Law Chapter 48, Section 42A. And-
What are we rescinding?
Ed, you want to mention this one a little bit? So this is about-
Yeah, this, this would actually rescind a master in a law that was accepted at the time of town a long, a long time ago, and accept a different statute, in my opinion, that actually probably brings the appropriate, would put the appropriate statute in place for today's time and times and accountability and how, how the current posting for the fire chief is presented.
Okay.
Yeah.
So this is, this is basically to bring the statute up to date, pretty much?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, that's probably, okay. So that was that one.
Yep.
Anybody have any comments, questions? That's it.
Make a motion to approve the packet as entirety as amended.
Second by Stephen. It's a motion by John, second by Stephen. All right, any further discussion on anybody? Everybody clear?
Roll call.
All right, could we have a roll call, please? All those in favor?
Lumbra, aye.
John, sin aye.
LaValle, aye.
Piper, aye.
Piper, aye, okay. Fowles, aye. Okay, motion is unanimously approved. Thank you very much. All right, so with those couple changes, we'll get those taken care of.
Hand up in the audience.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, Robert. Come on up.
Robert Floyd, College Highway, congratulations. The town moderator, special town meeting information session will be held in two weeks.
Okay.
Tuesday, November 28th, 7 o'clock, right here.
Perfect.
Cheers.
Thank you very much, Robert. Appreciate it. All right.
And just going back to, John had made a comment, I thought there were 22 articles. Just to let you know that, yes, as of yesterday, there were 22 articles. The chair pointed out to me that I had one in there twice, so that subtracted one. And at the recommendation of our town council, originally this, the last article of the rescension and the acceptance I had is two separate articles, town council recommended that we combine them. So that, that brought it down to 20.
Yeah, I must have misheard the chair when she, when she started the conversation. I thought she said we've got 42 articles to get through.
Oh, gosh.
That's why I'm late.
Oh, no. Oh, no.
Missing something here.
I surely didn't say that. I must not have articulated very well, but no, no.
It's hard from last week.
I wouldn't do that to anybody.
The moderator was already giving me a hard time at the, at the 21 we were at, because my original prediction was I thought would be around a dozen.
I know, and I was like in the 16 mode, so we're, we're somewhere in between here almost. But, okay, so that takes here the warrant. Any other business that can't wait until our next regular meeting, which is November 21? I believe we might have-
Yes. You have in front of you, we do have an employee who is eligible for the short-term, short-term disability program that we received notice from the doctor just today, that they will be out of work due to an accident for about a month, I believe it is. So the department head, Chief Fillingsworth, got me, sent me the paperwork earlier this afternoon. So individual is eligible for the program, so I would ask that the, and we do have some PIP laws here, so I would ask that the select board take, take up a motion and approve acceptance of this employee to receive the short-term disability program that we do offer.
Okay. Could I have a motion, please?
A discussion, okay. Do you want a motion first or a discussion?
Usually a motion and second, and then discussion. Yeah, can we do that?
Anybody can make a motion.
I move that the town employee received the short-term disability benefit as defined in our employee personnel policy.
Okay. Stephen, motion, second?
Second.
Dan, second? Okay, open for discussion, yeah?
So just to clarify, this is in, without going into details here, this is customary and with acceptance of previous past practices, this falls in, right? And then there's a, there is, can I get a certification that this particular injury is not the result of what would be covered under workers' comp claim instead? Right, just for the record.
Yeah.
I can, I can take department heads certification that this is not a workers' comp case.
Okay, hold on.
Then I'm good.
Okay, then with that, no other discussion? All those in favor, roll call, please.
Did somebody second that?
Uh, Dan did.
Oh, thank you.
Stephen, motion?
Lumbra, aye.
John, sin aye.
LaValle, aye.
Piper, aye.
Fowles, aye. Okay, unanimously approved, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And then one other thing, under any other business, I will ask the select board who was previously authorized the day after Thanksgiving off as being closed, which affects the library and would affect probably the water department and the highway department. If we don't have a snow or ice storm, does not really affect the town hall as they're off. So I would respectfully ask at least the select board to discuss possibly closing the town hall the day before Thanksgiving for half a day, for, for just the town hall employees.
So just to clarify, the Friday's already covered?
Friday's already covered, but town hall isn't open too.
Correct.
Yeah, and, and I've had a number of individuals ask me over the past week, week or so if we were open or closed. And there are a number of people that you use the day before to do a lot of baking and preparation for Thanksgiving. So I did say that I would bring it up to the select board.
And Friday in town hall, even though we've already authorized that, that applies to like two or three people that actually work on Friday, right?
I would say, I mean, if you want to have a motion first, I moved that the town hall, library, highway, and highway department, all non-public safety, have a half-day on Wednesday. Is that what you want? Town hall, library?
I would just word this for town hall employees.
Town hall only?
Yes.
Exclude the library?
Libraries already got Friday off. I mean, you can do what you want. Library, library works on Friday, the DPW works on Friday, the water department works on Friday.
All right, so-
Town hall employees do not.
All right, so I make a motion that short of a weather emergency, that town hall, public library, and highway department have a half-day on Thursday.
Starting at what time?
Noon. Noon dismissal. Work through lunch.
Okay, starting at noon, okay. Motion by John. Did I hear a second by Stephen?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion about that?
Yes. This day's not going to change. I get that Christmas floats around because it's the 25th, but if it's common, I mean, the schools are closed, half-day, they're not closed. Schools have half-day. I mean, that's half, that's our biggest department. I mean, we shouldn't be the week before taking this vote. I get why we are, but this particular day should be in the manual, and it should just be an automatic if we're going to have it or not, and not leave it to the, to the whim of the five wise people sitting at this table.
Very good. Well, as we have revisions to do in the manual, that's maybe one that can be thought about. Yep. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in-
Who seconded?
Stephen.
Stephen did. All those in favor, roll call.
Lumbra, aye.
John, sin aye.
LaValle, aye.
Piper, aye.
Fowles, aye. Okay, motion approved. Thank you, Ed. Much appreciate bringing that to our attention.
You're very welcome.
All right, another than that, just to note that we have our next select board meeting on the 21st, and then December 5th. And I think we'll wait until the 21st to figure out what our December schedule would be, again, with holidays and so forth here. Looks like we'd fit in one more right before Christmas, but we can tentatively put the 19th if you would like to do so. Looks like those are the only two that would be there for December, so the 5th is one already. Or we could wait until next meeting, whatever you'd prefer.
So noted.
Do you want to schedule it?
Tentatively plan for it so people have the time to be prepared?
Sure.
Okay, so then it would be the, December 5th is already on there, and then the next one, two weeks out, would be December 19th. That would be our last one.
Unless the chair cancels.
Yeah. And keep in mind, we have the town meeting, which is actually the 5th, so that is the special town meeting on the 5th. So the real select board meeting itself would be on the 19th. Although, we usually have a small one right before the town meeting.
Does the chair anticipate having some special meetings in December?
Yeah.
Outside of that, specifically to potentially appoint a new town administrator?
We might. I will know that by our next meeting. I know that they have gotten a few applications in, and they were working on them.
Next week? By, by next meeting?
I will know something by next week in terms of whether we need to add in some other meeting for that, that kind of purpose, yeah. And ditto maybe even for the fire chief one, I don't know. But, I mean, we might need something besides that, but if we could at least narrow down the 19th now, and then we'll see where we are with those. But it would be for those two purposes, correct? Yeah. Okay, everybody in favor? All right. We don't have an executive session tonight, as far as I know, so I will take-
Motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn. Stephen?
So moved.
And John, second?
Lumbra, aye.
All right.
John, sin aye.
LaValle, aye.
Piper, aye.
Fowles, aye. All right, we are adjourned at 6:43.
You all don't go anywhere. I will go make those changes.
Oh, yeah.
This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.